Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Howell Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, September 5th, 2024. Eileen, opening statement, please.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 5th, 2024, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 5th, 2024, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 5th, 2024, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Cristiano?
Present.
Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Withers? Have not heard from. Mr. Rebel?
Here.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Pike?
Here.
Mr. Carbonne?
Here.
And Chairman Husser?
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women serving here and abroad.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Eileen, is there any minutes?
I have no minutes this evening.
Any correspondence?
Yes. I sent an email to all the members about stormwater training and as part of our compliance, we have to keep track of all the training on that subject. So, anyone who hasn't taken it, could you please take it? It's a 45-minute video. And at the end of it, just send me an email that you have taken the training so that we can keep it for when we have to do our recording. The other item is an ordinance that was introduced by the council. It's ordinance 02435, and it has to do with family home daycares and residential zones of the township. And that will be a public hearing and adoption at the council's meeting on September 17th, which is before our next meeting. So, we have to comment on consistency with the master plan tonight.
Okay.
So, I know that there are some concerns about the ordinance. I would just say, overall, it's not inconsistent with the master plan. However, if there are comments or concerns that any of the board members may have, you should make the comments now. And then, when we move it forward to the governing body, the comments and concerns would be enumerated in that concern. So, it's not inconsistent with the master plan, but I do know, especially you, Nick, have some concerns about the ordinance that need to be put on the record and I think need to be pushed forward to the governing body.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just put it on the record. So, I read through it, and I agree. It's consistent with the master plan. But having been involved with childcare centers for a very long time in my career, you know, there is a differentiation between a childcare facility and a family daycare center. And just to give a little background, the reason that environmental regulations started going into childcare facilities is that a childcare facility was put into a thermometer factory. And there was pure mercury coming out of the walls of this factory. Kids got sick. Kids ended up dying later in life. So, they enforced all these regulations for childcare facilities that an environmental professional basically has to bless the facility or the property to make sure that it's safe for the precious cargo being children. So, there is some guidance. It's not necessarily rule or regulation with the DEP, but, you know, commercial, let's say like a Kitty Academy or something like that, would have to retain an LSRP, somebody like myself, or the 650 others in New Jersey. And they would go through, and it's similar to, we've all seen them up here, a Phase 1, an environmental assessment of the property, to make sure that there's no areas of concern that could potentially impact the children. There's also NJDOH regulations, which more gets into asbestos, lead-based paint, radon. So, you know, there's the DEP guidance, there's NJDOH, and then there's the Department of Children and Families. Now, I applaud the township in doing this. The thing is, I've seen it in the past where a person would say, hey, I have a childcare facility in my home, or a home childcare. And they start out with two kids, and then they get bigger and bigger and bigger. And all of a sudden, there's 20 kids roaming around, and you're like, what is going on? And they don't have a license. They weren't cleared environmentally. Again, it's houses, right? It's our, you know, places that we pass all the time. But the big thing of my concern that I've seen in other municipalities similar to Howell is that there's properties that are farmland, right? And these kids, you know, there's kids probably playing on this property anyway. But when you get into a regulation of a childcare facility that you're giving your child to another person to look after, are they potentially going to be impacted on that property? Okay? It could be pesticides. It could be lead-based paint chips. It could be, you know, numerous different things. So, I just wanted on the record that I am concerned. I think the intent is there and great, but I think it should be, we should abide by all the New Jersey rules that if a facility or a home daycare center, you know, wants to go into existence, that they do take that into consideration. If they're pursuing a DCF license, and they want to be licensed by the state of New Jersey, they should have to get an LSRP that should clear the property. And that's kind of my two cents on that. So, if anybody has any other...
What's the limit for a house?
There is no limit. You know, that's another misnomer. It's like, oh, if I watch two kids, I'm, you know, exempt. You're not exempt. If you want to get a license through the state of New Jersey, you have to do it properly.
So, is there a way to quantify that, to say you need to meet all the New Jersey regulations? I mean, is there a New Jersey regulation that the town needs to be following?
You're dealing with...
I think council wants to say something.
Yeah, there are regulations for daycare, separate and apart from land use or NJDEP. And my understanding, now this is the last time I looked at this, was two years ago, but a family daycare, as you're calling it, or in the home, is supposed to be limited to only up to five children. And their initial license would be for up to five children. And the regular daycare is highly regulated, as it's a square footage, where how many windows and doors there have to be, how many people are employed there, whereas the family daycare is not as heavily regulated, but they're not supposed to go over five kids.
Right. So, I think what Nick is suggesting is that, is there going to be someone, like, let's say you're up to five kids, and then you take a sixth kid, or a seventh kid, or an eighth kid. I think what you're suggesting, and I don't mean to speak for you, is that we should probably put in the ordinance that these regulations need to be adhered to regardless. So, if in fact someone goes from five to six to 10 to 20...
Well, Jen...
The town is not liable.
Jen, I think the ordinance says that no more than five.
Yeah, but Brian, honestly, are you going to be out there in Candlewood, looking in someone's house and saying, okay, that's five kids? No, no, six kids. No, now it's seven kids.
Well, that's law enforcement.
I think that's what Nick is suggesting, is that if we require this from the jump, then we're set regardless if they go beyond the five, correct?
Correct. And also, I mean, it gets into a point where, listen, it comes down to the comfortability of you giving your child to another human being to watch. And, you know, are you comfortable with giving somebody, you know, a facility that you have no idea what's on that property? You have no idea what's in the paint? You have no idea what's, you know, anything that this child may come in contact with that hasn't been cleared by an environmental professional?
I just think that it's a good comment. You're not opining one way or the other on whether it's a legitimate comment or not. I think it's a good comment to append to the ordinance, to take back to the governing body, and they can decide what they want to do with it. We're not asking you guys whether you agree with it or not.
I just don't understand what the ask is. So, can you just break it down?
The ask is, is that that environmental requirement be included in the ordinance regardless of the size, correct, Nick?
So, that's what I would like to see.
Yes.
So, if I could summarize, are you saying that for a home daycare, because there's New Jersey law that allows home daycares to happen? At least, that was cited in...
Yes, up to five kids, yes.
Up to five people. So, you're saying that with that, they are not required to abide by the same...
Correct.
...environmental rules...
Correct.
...as a real daycare center?
That is exactly what Nick is suggesting.
That's where I was listening.
And so, what his recommendation is, is that these environmental requirements be required regardless, correct?
I think that, yes.
I mean, that's what you're suggesting, correct?
Yes.
So, at the end of the day, I'm not asking you to agree or disagree. I think it's a comment that gets appended to the resolution of the consistency, saying this is something that the governing body should consider. It's up to them. They can decide what they want to do. But we're not asking you guys to say, yes, this is great. This is not great. This is a comment that's been made. I don't think, I don't think it's something that we're gonna...
Hold them up for.
Correct. But at the end of the day...
Council can adopt it at the upcoming meeting, and they can still take your comment into consideration and add it to the ordinance in a separate ordinance later. Or they can say, this is really important, let's not adopt tonight, which I think they said was the 17th, let's not adopt tonight, and we'll amend to add this comment.
Correct.
Which, of course, would need to be researched about whether or not it's permissible to limit family daycare in that manner.
Mm-hmm.
Because it may very well be that if it's truly a home in a residential neighborhood, and there really is no risk of an environmental contamination...
That's my, that's my point, though. How do you know?
You don't know, right?
So, if you have that peace of mind, everybody sleeps better.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I agree with Jen. I don't see the harm in adding this as a potential comment back to the governing body for consideration when they go to adopt this ordinance. They can choose to say, we're good where we are, or, oh, this is a good idea. But I think it's a good comment. I think it should be added to any resolution, which we've already decided is not inconsistent with the master plan.
Right, right.
And it's something that the governing body needs to take into consideration. I don't know that they underst... I mean, to be perfectly honest, Nick, like, you're an LSRP, so I don't know that that was vetted through an LSRP before the ordinance was provided. So, that's comments that I think is part of this process as to the betterment of the town. It's up to you guys to decide at the governing body when it gets to that point. But I think it should be included.
That's all I got.
Does it also cover water testing?
It does.
Like Legionella, E. coli?
Uh, it's basically like your potable water, so lead and copper is the big one, right?
Yep.
But yeah, water testing would be part of it, too, but...
I would agree.
So, now I defer back to the board. I would recommend a resolution to support the ordinance as consistent with the master plan with the comments from the chairman associated with the environmental issues.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right.
That's all I have on correspondence.
Great. All right, on to resolutions. First, case number SD 3003 CI, Howell Township. Resolution granting minor subdivision approval, ancillary bulk variance relief, eligible voters, Mr. Greenfield and Mr. Tannenhouse. Gentlemen?
Nick, I'll be honest with you. I can't in good conscience review this. I don't even remember seeing it. I may have seen it three months ago.
It came three months ago.
Yeah.
We haven't had a meeting, or else one of you were missing it and couldn't vote on it.
Is this the...
I couldn't find it in my email. So, Eileen, can you resend it to me? I'm sure we'll get a break, and I'll take a look at it later.
I can't send it to you now. This is for the subdivision next door with the Autozone.
The Autozone, right.
It was from over a year ago, and I asked...
Oh, that's, oh, this was, this was the, was it the trees or... Can you give me a summary on it again? It's a lot back here, isn't it?
It's a lot behind us.
Yeah, right behind Autozone.
Like going into...
It's a subdivision of township property?
Yeah, I think it was a transfer of...
Of property from Autozone to...
Right, that's what, that's what it was.
I see, okay.
It's a good thing.
No, no, no. Like I said, I just couldn't remember what it was.
I couldn't remember.
And I couldn't find it.
So, technically, I only need one person from that meeting to vote yes on that.
Yep.
But if there are two people, that's great.
I'm okay.
But Brian, you're comfortable?
I'm comfortable, Nick. I remember reviewing those minutes. I just...
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
There we go.
Now, take the roll.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Case number SP 1107, Nine North Realty LLC, a resolution granting preliminary and final site plan approval with ancillary variance and design waiver relief, eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Tannenhouse, Ms. Pike here? Oh, yeah, Ms. Pike and myself. Do I have a motion?
I will make motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Next is case number SP 1115, Jabe Howell LLC, resolution granting preliminary and final site plan approval for Phase 1 and preliminary site plan approval for Phase 2 with ancillary variance and design waiver relief, eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, Councilwoman Fisher, and myself.
I will make motion.
Okay.
Mr. Cristiano, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mercer?
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Withers? Oh, he's not here, sorry. Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, the next is review of resolution O-24-30, resolution for review of proposed ordinance O-24-30, amending Chapter 188 of the Land Use Article 1 Title and Definitions. Eligible voters, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, and Councilwoman Fisher. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Greenfield?
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Next is review of resolution O-24-31, resolution for review of proposed ordinance O-24-31, amending Chapter 188, Land Use Article 9, zoning requirements to add Section 64.1 entitled farm-related special events on a small scale. Eligible voters, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, and Councilwoman Fisher. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Rebel?
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Next, review of resolution O-24-32, resolution for review of proposed ordinance O-24-32, supplementing Chapter 188-69 entitled ARE Zones to Include Farm-Related Special Events on a Large Scale and Farm-Related Special Events on a Small Scale as Permitted Uses. Eligible voters, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, and Councilwoman Fisher. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Greenfield?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mercer?
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Next is case number SP-1127, Diversified Acquisitions LLC, is a resolution granting submission waivers, eligible voters, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, and Councilwoman Fisher. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Mr. Rebel, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Greenfield?
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Three more to go. Case number SD-2998F, Wadsworth Development LLC, resolution granting submission waivers, eligible voters, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, and Councilwoman Fisher. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Councilwoman Fisher, second?
Second.
Mr. Greenfield?
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Next is case number SD 3015, Abraham Wine Men, a resolution granting submission waivers, eligible voters, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, and Councilwoman Fisher. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, second?
Second.
Mr. Greenfield?
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
And the last, case number SD 3014, Neil and Monica Slattery, resolution granting minor subdivision with ancillary variance and design waiver relief, eligible voters, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, and Councilwoman Fisher. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Councilwoman Fisher, and a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rebel.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
And sorry, on yours, I probably don't have it, but there was also a resolution for 4461 Route 9 Realty.
Oh, okay.
Case number SP 1126.
Got it. Okay, yep. Last one. Case number SP 1126, 4461 Route 9 Realty LLC, resolution granting preliminary and final site plan with ancillary variance and design waiver relief, eligible voters, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, and Councilwoman Fisher. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, in a second? Mr. Greenfield?
I'm sorry, who was the motion?
Mr. Mercer and Mr. Greenfield for a second.
Thank you. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
All right, that concludes resolutions. Eileen, any submission waivers?
No submission waivers.
Okay, let's get on.
And before you go too far, the application, the next one is fine, but the next extension of time for SP 1055 1228 Realty is off the agenda. They had to notice because it would be an extension past five years.
Oh.
Their notice was deficient, so they're coming back with notice.
Okay. Do we have to make an announcement?
No.
Counsel, no, okay.
Because they're going to reschedule.
All right. So, the first application is SD 3005 Stanley Domain, or Domain, I apologize, for an extension of time. Counselor, how are we doing tonight?
Doing well, thank you. Zachary Stazinski of Davidson Eastman Uno's Peone on behalf of Stanley Domain.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Sorry, yeah. Zachary Stazinski of Davidson Eastman Uno's Peone for Stanley Domain, the applicant. My last name is spelled S-T-Y-C-Z-Y-N-S-K-I. And the long and short of the extension of time of application is that there was an, the resolution was granted May 4th, 2023. We contacted the DEP shortly thereafter as we're required to get their approval pursuant to NJSA 138B-6. We only got their approval August 6th, 2024. Once we received that approval, we wrote a letter to the Planning Board seeking the extension of time so we could file the map since we're out of the 190-day requirement.
Got it.
So, Mr. Chair, if I might?
Sure.
This would be a, my recommendation, Ron's recommendation, which I reviewed with him, would be a motion to grant the extension of time for 190 days, starting from September 1, 2024 forward. So, the time period of the delay is put on hold. So, they just got their DEP approvals in last month. So, now, they now have 190 days to go forward, in which they must record the map.
Got it.
So, the motion is, grant the extension of time for 190 days, starting September 1, forward.
Reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
[sighs]
I guess technically I have to open up to the public now?
No, that's not a notice.
Oh, beautiful. Yeah, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do you have a second? Mr. Tannenhouse?
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's Ron will do it.
Resolution will be on the next agenda for that.
I appreciate it.
Got it, okay. Okay. Next is case number SD 2998F, Wadsworth Development LLC, and this is for a final major subdivision. Hello again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Michael Herbert of the law firm, Aparker McKay, on behalf of applicant, Wadsworth Development LLC. As the board is aware, this is a matter that was before the board for preliminary. There was a denial. It was then settled after there was a redesign pursuant to what the board members were looking for from the preliminary application. The settlement was approved by the board, and we're now back for final tonight. Very simply, we have sought to comply with all the requirements of the preliminary and the settlement, which I believe we have. The subdivision, as you can see from the exhibit that's being handed out, is now a cul-de-sac which buffers Michelle Avenue. There is no, there are no entrance ways. There's no way of ingress or egress from Michelle, which was a main concern of the board. And the, we believe the site, thanks to the board, you know, working this out with the board, we believe the site works in a very, in a much better way than it did before, and that there should not be any issues with regard to ingress and egress. With me tonight, I have one witness. It is our engineer and planner, Mr. Walter Hopkins. And we have an exhibit list that was distributed by, which was given to me by the board secretary, which has A 1 through, A 1 through 15, and then there are inter-office reports of B 1 through B 12. So, at this point, I'd like to proceed with Mr. Hopkins, if you want to have him sworn.
Can you be sworn in?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you raise your right hand, sir?
Could you for a loop with that other waiver application?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Your full name and your, uh, titles that you're being qualified for as an expert?
Sure, Walter Hopkins. Um, I'm the president and owner of WJH Engineering. Um, I'm a professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, Maryland.
You're good, man.
Thank you.
Mr. Herbert, you can sit at the table. There is a mic there, if you want.
Gladly.
Are you, are you qualified just as an engineer or a planner too?
A planner as well.
So, you probably wish to balance.
I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey as well.
Thank you. We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
And I just handed out this color rendering, so I marked that as A sixteen.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hopkins, uh, for A sixteen, I believe it's on the easel here, right here. We also have up on electronically the, the black and white version of the subdivision. Is that the, uh, se- settlement plan for major subdivision? Sorry, my eyes are, are working, uh, semi, semi-well tonight. Uh, so if you could just explain to the board how this matter, uh...
Michael, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we're here for final, so let's focus. What items were left outstanding from preliminary to final, and let's focus on that, go over that, and be done with it?
Yes, ma'am.
So, there are some conditions associated with preliminary. Let's just go through them and discuss them, and, and we don't need to go back, back through preliminary. Like, we already approved preliminary. We're here for final. What are we talking about for final?
Okay, so, uh, there were various items left at preliminary. Uh, Mr. Hopkins, if you could just go over the items that, uh, were, they were looking for for final that were changed.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a few, uh, the changes from the plan, the board will see. It, it looks almost identical as the last time. We did add some stormwater inlets that, uh, your, your engineer asked for to help with, um, drainage along Ramp Town-Greenville Road, so to help, uh, remove some of the water from, from the road. There's a detention basin access, a connection, uh, for an overflow that's added that really, um, was requested from your professionals. At this point, it's really just dotting i's and crossing t's with the various filing of paperwork, deeds, things like that, and then there are some items, uh, technical items in CME's letter. We would agree to comply with all of the remaining conditions that would be carried forward, and any technical items in the CME letter.
Mr. Hopkins, is, is that just a, uh, like an access road for cleaning out the basins or maintenance of the basins off of Michelle?
Yes, it is, and that was, that was added. That's one of the things that has changed.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, just note the one change that we wanted to make sure was just put on the record, and this was agreed to at the prior hearing, um, was we requested that the discharge pipe from, um, infiltration B be extended, um, to the inlet within Michelle Boulevard. So, these plans reflect that, but it technically then puts that storm sewer through that hundred-foot buffer. That was as was agreed to, um, and per a recommendation, but I did just want to note that, um, because otherwise, there's no additional relief that's being sought here. Um, and the applicant has indicated that they agree to comply with our report. Um, in the conditions, I mean, among the things that were important was that this was going to be a private road, so it's identified now as such. It's going to be contained within its own lot. Um, and the balance of the conditions are either remain ongoing or have been addressed, so I have nothing further at this time.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want, I don't wish to anger Ms. Beam any further, so, uh, I would be happy to...
I'm just trying to be nice.
No, I, uh, I, I want to keep Ms. Beam very happy, so, uh, it, uh, at that, you know, I think this is matter is ready to be submitted to the board as final unless there are further questions.
Any questions from board members?
If I might, I have a question.
Sure.
I believe this is to be subject also to any conditions within the settlement agreement
Yes.
to also be complied with. That would be in the resolution as well.
And I was going around that board very slowly, the way Ms. Beam...
That's okay. We don't need to go over it.
So, I, I do appreciate you putting that in there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions from board members? Jen, Laura, Sherry, you're all good?
We're good.
Okay, I will open this up to the public. Seeing everybody running forward. All right, I will close the public. And I guess at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Need a motion or we need to summarize?
I think, I think that's good.
Motion? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the application.
I will second.
Mr. Tannenhouse and Mr. Cristiano.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
Thank you, board members. We really appreciate your time and efforts on this matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you, board professionals, for your help.
And it's the Michael and Walter show again, I believe. All right, so...
And I, I am now chasing, Mr. Chairman, so I will make sure that we do this one as quickly as possible.
No, take your time. So, the second is, and the final for this evening is case number SD three, zero, one, three, Besseder LLC. This is a preliminary major subdivision with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Good eve- good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, Michael, I gotta fix this chair, I apologize. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, Michael W. Herbert of the law firm of Parker McKay on behalf of the applicant Besseder LLC. Uh, and we again have, uh, we again have color renderings to distribute to you. Uh, this is a, an application for preliminary, uh, major subdivision for property, uh, at fifty-seven Church Road, known as blocks seventy-six, lots thirty-three and thirty-four. Uh, we have a, an exhibit list that was, uh, prepared by the board secretary. Uh, and again, I just want to emphasize, we're only looking for preliminary approval tonight, not final, just preliminary. Uh, and, uh, we have the exhibit lists of A one through A fifteen, uh, along with inter-office reports of B one through B twenty-one. I do ask if the board attorney could find that we have, uh, the board has, uh, jurisdiction to hear this matter.
And, uh, the, the notice is appropriate, even though it said preliminary and final?
That's why I meant...
Uh, uh, the, the attorney has indicated they're only seeking preliminary approval. It makes no difference. You have jurisdiction.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. You can have...
You can look at one.
My apologies. Uh, let me just switch chairs here.
Mr. Chairman and board professionals, I apologize for not sending, uh, the email over. I'll, I'll make sure that that doesn't happen again.
I'm gonna mark this one as A sixteen as well, colored rendering.
Thank you. Okay, uh, uh, again, Mr. Chairman, I have before you, you called it the Michael and Walter show. I have before you again Walter Hopkins, our engineer and planner in this matter. Uh, I, I would ask that he be sworn, and we can then qualify him.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And your name again and your titles, quickly.
Walter Hopkins, um, owner of WJH Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I have been accepted by this board.
Good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Hopkins, uh, the sub- the subdivision that we're applying for, if you could just lay it out for the board as to what we're doing?
Sure, it's a sixteen-point-seven acre site. It's on the south side of Church Road, um, west of the intersection with Kent, just, just west of Tioga. Um, it's, there's a home there with the address of fifty-seven Church Road. It's block seventy-six, lots thirty-three and thirty-four, and it's located in your ARE two zone. It's surrounded by, um, single-family homes, uh, very similar in, in nature and use as what is there and what will be proposed. What is being proposed are six new homes, new, single-family homes. Um, excuse me, let me take a step back. What is there is a single-family home with access directly onto Church Road. It's got kind of a little circular driveway. There are various buildings throughout the site, uh, which are all proposed to be removed with the exception of the existing home. And that home will remain. So, what is proposed are six new, approximately one-acre lots. Uh, we're utilizing a cluster provision for this, and the existing home will be retained with a nine-point-one-nine acre, um, lot, which will be restricted for open space. All the new homes will have access to a new road, which, uh, connects to Church Road, an RSIS compliant cul-de-sac, curb and sidewalk on both sides, uh, and all homes will have adequate parking pursuant to RSIS, two-car garage, uh, and a seventy-five-foot-long driveway. The homes will, the existing home will continue to, to remain and access Church Road directly. Around, uh, along Church Road, we are maintaining a hundred-foot buffer, uh, on the north side of the, um, excuse me, on the south side, or maybe consider it the, the, um, the west side of the proposed home. We'll maintain the existing vegetation, but, um, supplement it and have a hundred-foot buffer. On the other side, on the east side, uh, the house will remain, and the house will be, uh, within your required hundred-foot, um, street buffer, uh, for which we would seek relief. The remainder of the site does have a minimum of fifty-foot buffer remaining. Uh, a lot of it, most of it, has existing vegetation, and we'll also ask for relief from, um, from supplementing that bit, excuse me, not from supplementing it, but from providing either a fence or a berm, because essentially we'd be removing vegetation to propose vegetation, and would just suggest that we work with your, with your board's professionals to come up with an adequate, um, screening to comply with the spirit of your, of your ordinance.
Have you reached out to Sherry to discuss this?
We have not.
So, obviously, that's something that we recommend before you guys show up here every single time. Um, and there are definitely areas, yes, it's vegetated. There are definitely areas that are sparse.
Yes.
And you definitely need to work with her to make sure that she's satisfied with whatever you come up with.
Uh, uh, agreed. We would accept that as conditional preliminary and, and absolutely have that meeting prior to returning for final.
And, Mr. Chairman, our apologies for not reaching out ahead of time. That should've been done, and we did not, but we will make sure it's taken care of.
And what I would just note, Mr. Chairman, is part of their relief that they're seeking tonight is that they're not meeting the required replacement trees. So, they have two-point-one acres of clearing, and they're replanting about a hundred and thirty-seven trees. So, again, uh, should the board go to move tonight, I don't recommend that we grant Woodlands management nor that waiver at this time, because that should have been something that would have been resolved.
Got it.
And they're also asking for relief of the buffer? For the existing house on the site?
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, if, uh, we'll, again, we'll reach out for the tree ex- the board's tree expert, uh, work through what can be done at the site, and as far as the waiver goes, if you do grant, if you decide to grant preliminary, we'll make sure that we come back with either a fully compliant plan for Woodlands, or we'll ask for a waiver at final, if that's, if that's okay with the board.
And the waiver, uh, goes with the caveat that we'll make the cost of contribution rather than on site.
Yeah, and again, the waiver would include a contribution if we do apply for it.
Right. Well, on the map, what are, what's WQB and what, what is that?
Water Quality Basin?
Oh.
Stormwater, it's a stormwater management infiltration basin.
Didn't go through my acronym bank. I apologize.
Sorry, DEP's got some real good ones. Uh, you, you have yours, and we have, we have ours. So, in addition to this, there'll be, um, a, uh, on that topic, a private homeowners' association, which will own and maintain the, um, stormwater management system in the basins. Uh, we believe it meets all DEP and HOW requirements. There are, of course, some technical issues that CME's raised that we would agree to comply with as any condition. There is also in, and I'd like to thank the board's professionals. We've had several TRCs, and they've really kind of helped us refine the design of this, and, um, one of the things that, uh, they suggested was that the stormwater management, uh, basins be tied to an inlet down the road, uh, which we agreed to do, so if, for whatever reason, the basins aren't functioning the way that they should be, they'll have a positive relief. The home does, the area does not have sewer or public water, so these will be serviced by, um, private wells and, um, individual septic systems, which would be, um, uh, any condition of approval. We've done the soils work. It's certainly, um, capable of supporting, um, septic systems in this area, and our office designs, um, one of our specialties, we design a lot of septic systems. Uh, the street lighting was proposed. Um, your board's professionals, I guess, have made us aware of, of a, of a requested light fixture that, um, the town's requesting, and we would agree to change the light fixture and make sure that we meet with the, the lighting levels that, uh, are requested. Uh, there is landscaping proposed throughout. It sounds like we're gonna have to have a meeting with, um, with Sherry and try to improve upon that, and would certainly agree to that as well. Um, that's really the, the summary of the, of the, um, um, what's being proposed tonight.
Mr. Chair, uh, just a question over here. Um, regarding the property that's wooded, that's around the development, is that going to maintain, be maintained as a farm?
So, uh, it's being suggested that I, I believe it'd be, uh, open space rather than a farm at this time, so it would be maintained, uh, as it is, and I guess we're still keeping further clearing.
So, can I ask you a question in terms of the calculations? So, you're using part of that lot as your buffer, right?
Correct.
If you subtract the area of that buffer, do you meet the twenty percent?
The twenty...
The open space lot averaging requirement require twenty percent be in the large lot. So, if you take the buffer out, does the balance of it comply?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
So, that's definitely something that we're gonna need to know before we act on this.
So, we're, we're talking the, the eastern and the western strips?
Yes.
Got it.
It's part of the back lot.
Right.
And the back lot's being left as open space?
Correct, but...
And there's no access from any other points?
No.
So, if I may, um... Point here, there's, so this is, this is the existing, uh, home, so that will, there'll be a lot associated with that, and then the lot will continue along the buffer, include the area in the back, and then the buffer along this side as well.
So, the back piece is not gonna be disturbed?
Correct.
And how, how is that lot, how is that designated? Is that gonna be owned?
So, let me understand this. I, I apologize. So, this back lot and the buffer is associated with the existing house?
That's where I was going with this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's exactly where I was going. So, is it, is it gonna be part of the existing house, or is that gonna be?
Yes.
Part of the, the homeowners' association?
The existing house.
I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's...
Why?
I don't know that that works.
What would be the benefit to that, if it's gonna be left as open space? Why not, why not deed it to the homeowners' association?
Well, they can't access it because there's no...
In my opinion, that leaves responsibility to one person rather than, uh, some entity which, in, in this, this size, uh, may be neglected.
Okay, just sort of, I don't, I don't understand all the rules and regulations, but how does that, how does designated open space today ensure that it stays as open space in perpetuity?
We would place a conservation easement upon it, and what I've, I, I...
And what does that, what does that mean to a layman person?
It cannot, I apologize. It cannot be built upon.
And does that mean that that's something that gets recorded in the deed at the county?
It is recorded.
So, transfer of ownership, no one, no one can say, hey, I got all these extra acres. Let me go, let me go clear them and make a dirt track.
Sure, and as, as the board member, uh, uh, just so the board members understand, I, I too, I represent a lot of, I work for a lot of towns, I work for a lot of boards. We have found that these HOAs, when you have the HOA in charge of the open space, no one does anything. It's, it's a real problem to enforce. It's, it's very difficult for the town to do so. So, what we're proposing here, and this is something I've always advocated in my towns, is to have the, the present home on the property be responsible for maintaining all of that open space. Uh, and that way, you, if you have a problem, you've got one person to talk to. You don't have a homeowners' association that maybe goes away or is not constituted properly and so forth. I mean, we've, we've, we've all seen stories of how that occurs. Here, you've got one person responsible. If there's a problem, that one person has to take care of it.
I, I don't necessarily disagree with the concept, but Jen, let me ask you this question. Just wanna have a sidebar conversation with our professionals, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So... Howell, Howell is very good at maintaining open space. We've got, we've spent a lot, the taxpayers have spent a ton of money in preserving a lot of open space around the town.
Correct.
So, I, I don't think anybody would disagree that having more open space preserved in some way, shape, or form is okay. But how do we quantify that in perpetuity? Do we have to physically go out there and count every single tree?
No, so...
And deed every single tree to make sure that, that, that if a tree dies, they replace it? They can never cut them? I mean, how do we...
Open space doesn't mean that every tree is preserved, okay? So, it's open space. It's conservation. But I have a concern about the fact that that lot is connected to the existing home. My recommendation would be that that home be subdivided and an acre, and an acre lot consistent with the balance of the lots, and then the balance of the property be put in a conservation easement, because let's be honest, a single homeowner could go then back in there and clear the, the lot.
And, yeah, and...
Exactly, which we don't want. I get, I get, you could put whatever provisions I get, I get you could put whatever provisions you want, but we've been here a long time. People do whatever they want on their property.
They'll come with the bulldozers and they'll ask for forgiveness. That's the issue.
Exactly.
Two people talking.
Exactly. I, I agree with you. They're going to ask for forgiveness instead of permission.
We didn't know...
I, I don't think that attributing that conservation lot to that home is a good idea.
So then, does it make sense to convey it to the homeowners association or to the town?
I think, I think the town.
Because there is a part of the property on the other side that does touch church, which gives the town access to the property without having to...
But that's the buffer, Brian, so like they can't use that for access. There's going to be a berm and all kinds of stuff in there if, if there's area, which it looks like there is in front of that, right?
No, but I meant...
We also need to get past the use because I understand what was testified to, but they're also calling this a farm lot, which means if it's governed under right to farm...
They can clear it.
They can come in and clear it, and these new homes are not going to have the 50-foot buffer we would have required to separate from an active farm. So, I mean, that is a critical issue because as labeled on the plans, as labeled on the exhibit that they handed out tonight, it's called a farm lot.
So do you, do you want...
So I, I don't know if this is farmland qualified currently, this lot, but I, they're going to have to lose that designation.
Does anybody have any ideas, or do we want to take a five-minute potty break and then you guys can mull it over and we can come back?
I mean, my recommendation is that the applicant take this back and we come back in a, on another day. Because these are big ticket items. I don't think we're going to resolve this over a rest break. You know, like they need to resolve what they're going to do with that, how they're going to manage it. Are they going to separate that from that existing home? If they separate it from the existing home, does the area comply with the 20%? Like there's a lot of questions associated with how this is going to go.
Could you prescribe the 20% to me?
So they're using this open land subdivision provision, which requires 20% of the area to be preserved in either agriculture or conservation, which is this back lot, but the back lot includes the, the existing home.
And the benefit of that is so that they can have an extra home with us, on a smaller lot instead of the two-acre lots?
They, they can, they can cluster down to acre lots, which they've done. And all those lots are compliant with that, I'm not saying that they're not, but this back lot and how it's going to be used and how it's going to be accessed and what's going to happen there, there's a big open-ended question. And honestly, I don't think we're going to get that answer today. I think that we should, they should go back, resolve these issues, and come back at a later date. That's my recommendation.
And if the existing house was removed, would that, would then, would then they comply with the 20%?
I don't know. That's my point. They need to figure out how they're going to handle it and then come back to us with, you know, whether it's a farm lot and how they're going to access that farm lot because the way it's laid out now, they would have to come through the buffer, which is not allowed.
And like you said, you need 50 feet in a farm.
Correct. And then is there going to be a 50-foot buffer on the back of the cul-de-sac lot? There, there's a lot of items that need to be resolved before we can even act on preliminary.
So we're talk, we're talking two completely separate requirements if it's open space versus farm?
100%.
I think if this is a farm lot, it's not an open space dedication.
Right.
And then it's not compliant, and then perhaps we don't even have jurisdiction.
Okay, got it.
So I, I honestly think they need to figure out what they want to do and then come back to us at a later date with a more refined plan with this issue. I would represent, though, I'm not supportive of this big loop-around lot being attached to an existing house. Like, we don't generally, and quite honestly, I don't even think the storm order management rules allow for that. But, so that has to be resolved, and how they're handling the back lot has to be resolved. And this is not something that we're going to resolve today over a break. I think we should put a pin in it, they need to go back, resolve what they need to do, and then come back at a later date with a more refined plan.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Chairman, we, when we first brought this matter in, that's why it says farm lot, we proposed it as a farm. We've been working with the, the board professionals. Again, they've been terrific, as they always are here. And, you know, we want to make the town, the board, and our, and your professionals happy. So when, that is why when we were looking at it today and there was a concern about access to the farm and all, we said, fine, we'll dedicate it as open space. My idea to have it as one lot, to have that one lot be able to take care of, of the full area, as, as I was arguing before. And, and that's why we came to you today saying, okay, not a farm lot, even though it says farm lot on there, we're willing to change that. It's easily, you know, it's easily corrected and dedicated as open space. I, I understand the worry about, you know, homeowner going back there and plowing it under. And Mr. Lieutenant House, I'm sure, has seen some, some bad actors. We're not a bad actor, but...
He had one a number of years ago, right over.
Yeah.
And we're not suggesting they're a bad actor at all. I'm just suggesting that there's a lot of things, and then Shari just brought up...
I think people just don't know. You know, you buy a house, you don't think about it.
But Shari just brought up a point too that talks about the open lands, and that under 2B, if you're in the ARE2, which you are, it says 50% needs to be dedicated to the open space, not 20%. So there's definitely some things that need to be worked out before the board gets put in a position of having to act.
We're not going to make the 50% on lower. We're definitely not going to make the 50 with the, calling to grant relief. At least we have that. Yeah, and, and look, if we're at 50%, we'll have to be, you know, begging for, you know, we'll have to be asking for relief. And, you know, that's, we, we want to make sure that we comply, and again, trying to make everyone happy here and, you know, dedicate some open space for the town. You know, this is, as Mr. Lieutenant House has said very well, this is a town that really is serious about their open space, they've done a great job with it, and we want to be part of that.
So Mike, what I'm hearing from you is farm is completely off the table.
If, if, we, look, we want to make this work, and whatever we can do to make this work is what we will do.
Yeah, I think, Nick, it's, it's all about the buffer, and that's going to be dictating it. Professionals will handle that.
I honestly, I just feel like there needs to be a lot of cleanup before Laura, myself, and Shari get put in a position of giving you guys advice.
Fair enough.
So I really feel like they need to clean up how this is going to go, and then come back at a later date.
I think in the absence, I mean, even if the board thinks about the application we heard prior, right, that was among lot averaging, that parcel, the open space parcel, was a separate parcel dedicated to the HOA. And I think what the concern here is, is whether, whether we got past the farming or not the farming, the fact that we're encompassing lot 33.01, which is 9.19 acres, right, but that includes the home site as well. So is it over 50%? Maybe, maybe not. But how are we really going to restrict that? When we have a dedicated land to an HOA that is deed restricted, well, it's easy. Lot one, for example, can't be touched. I think the concern here is how we would implement the intent of our ordinance. So the benefit that they're getting by creating smaller lots and doing less impervious and not being straight-up ARE2, two-acre lots, is that we have this preservation. That was the whole idea behind this. And my concern is, you know, if we got past the farm or not the farm, how do we ensure that this area is not going to be...
Clear cut.
Clear cut or used for a different purpose other than what it is supposed to be, which is retention of open land woods.
And I...
Can I just point out a thing? The HOA, you were saying, would maintain that or take care of that?
Correct.
But you're not very confident in that, right?
We, we were arguing for the one, the one lot managing the property.
Right, right. So but you're, but the HO, these basins, okay, that are on this property, I'm going to tell you right now, they're not going to work. Because I work for Public Works, and we get handed these all the time.
I'm sorry, I missed part of your...
The basins?
The basins, I apologize.
They, they don't work. I get handed these all the time from developments, and we have to end up taking care of them and fixing them. They don't work. So the HOA's not going to take care of the property in the back, they're not going to take care of the basins, right?
Yeah.
So why should I get stuck maintaining these? Because they're all over town, and I got to maintain all of them.
Sure.
So what are we going to do about that as well?
Well, again, we're, we're agreeing to maintain them. The HOA would have to maintain them.
But you just, you don't even have confidence in the HOA that they're going to maintain the property in the back.
They have in lots.
I do have confidence...
I agree with you.
I, I don't get it. Like, you have no faith in it at all.
I, I do. For basins, I don't so much as the overall...
I don't for basins. I disagree. Because you know what? I've seen it.
I'm sure you have.
I see it every day. And I'm out there working it.
Yeah. And again, we're trying to make, we want your board professionals to be confident and happy in this application. We want the board to be confident and happy in this application.
And I want your HOA to handle those basins.
Sure. You know, and we're, you know, we're doing, we're putting in a sidewalk, even though there's no sidewalks on the whole road, we're putting in sewer extensions down.
Well, wait, that has nothing to do with what he's saying. Where he's talking about the...
No, 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 no. I'm just trying to, just trying, what I'm trying to argue, not argue, but I'm trying to state is, we're trying to do everything that we're being asked to do. That, that's all I'm saying. I didn't, I didn't mean to...
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I get it, but like I feel like we're like redesigning on the fly. And it's putting Laura, Shari, and I in a position where we cannot provide you with the adequate counsel that you require from us. I feel like we need to put a pin in this, it needs to be carried, they need to resolve these issues, come back with a clear-cut plan so that we're in a position to say to you, we're comfortable, we're not comfortable, whatever. But at this point, we're not in that position to say that.
Correct.
And so like I understand the position that the applicant is putting forth, I just feel like there's too many uncertainties, they need to go back, sharpen their pencils, figure this out, get the reader property resolved, get that one lot out of that property, and then go back and, and give us the information that we need. But we're not going to get that tonight. So I, I understand the, the position that the applicant's taking, and I take no exception to what they're saying, but at this point, we don't have the information in front of us to provide you with what you expect from us in an application before you make this decision.
No, and I appreciate that.
And I, and I'm not arguing against Ms. Bean or Ms. Newman at all. I, I'm not. I just wanted to lay out where we are with this application as well, and that we're, we're trying to comply. And if they would like to, for us to come back and have another TRC with them where we can go over and try to get it to...
I think I would too.
No, no, and, and I would, I would as well.
Yeah.
Again, I'm, I'm a board attorney for most of the time, and I get it.
Yeah, no, understood.
So we'd be glad to do that, we just want to make sure we have everything set for the next, the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I think it would put everybody a little bit at ease and make everyone more comfortable in, in, you know...
Mr. Chair, might, might I add something?
Sure.
So from the legal perspective, the designation as a farm lot is an issue because of use. And that would deprive this board of jurisdiction if it stays that way. So while they're figuring out the issues about who should own, who should maintain, and how it should be subdivided off if that's decided to be the way we're going, subdivide off the house lot and leave the rest of the lot, and whoever gets it, homeowner, town, however you want to do it, but the application might need to be amended specifically to state that they are going to forego the farm lot designation. This way, we maintain jurisdiction. If that, if that isn't done, the notice that they gave here for, for, for this hearing is, is not able to be carried forward to a new date. So, you know, you've done notice, I assume they want to come back and still use that notice. We would announce a new date here, but again, if something changes significantly, there needs to be new notice anyway. So that doesn't really matter. And as to questions about the, in perpetuity, a conservation easement or a deed of, of conservation to the town will work to protect, or should work to protect, that there is no clear cutting of trees. And it is a forever, a forever requirement, it's a perpetual, when it is done for a public purpose. So the conservation easement should have those words, done for a public purpose. Because the major case on this issue was in Denville where the, the owner that held the major part of the land, 15 years later, wanted to subdivide further. And that is what you don't want to happen. And there was a big dispute because the public had a right to maintain that. Because that was the promise at the first hearing and the first subdivision was, we have a right to maintain, that's a public purpose. You, you can't change it if it was given for the public good, which is what you're doing here.
I actually litigated that whole issue.
Well, there you go. We don't need to get into the details.
We don't need to get into this, like case study.
No, it's fascinating.
Let's carry it.
Yeah. Needs to be carried.
Eileen, what are we looking for as far as dates go?
September 19th is definitely out. October 10th has one application already scheduled, and October 17th has one. And then I have November 7th and December 5th with nothing, but I don't know how much time you need.
Why is it the 10th and not the...
Uh, I think it's a Jewish holiday or something.
Yeah. Rosh Hashanah.
So what are my options?
I mean, how long's it going to take you to figure this out and revise the plan to make it?
And are you doing another TRC or anything?
Yeah.
No, I think I'll be hitting the 10th.
I would say end of October.
It's a rough night for anyone, so I'm going to say 17. Uh, I think the 10th will be cutting it a little bit close to 17.
Yeah, I think that's about it. 17?
Again, whatever Ms. Bean wants me to do, I will do.
So we're going to go with the 17th?
Yes.
October 17th, Eileen.
October 17th.
Are you asking for the announcement of the date for your reappearance back here, sir?
Yes.
Okay. So with the board's permission, the applicant is going to pursue the issues that were raised today, and the next hearing on this matter will be on October 17th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in this location. And if any further adjournment happens, it will be announced at that meeting if they need more time. But right now, you should mark that in your calendar to come back. That's for members of the public.
It's carried with no further notice.
No, carried with no further notice. You have to mark it in your calendar if you want to return.
All right, thank you.
I just...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate everyone's time.
Thanks very much.